At this time we have a presentation by Chief Hammack.
Leaving out a mayor, Mr. Smith, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure tonight to inform our view of the successful culmination of our efforts to seek re-accreditation with the Commission on Accreditation for All Enforcement Agencies, otherwise known as CALEA. Created in 1979 through the combined efforts of four major law enforcement organizations, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, the National Sheriffs Association, and the Police Executive Research Forum. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. CALEA is widely recognized as the nation's official accreditation commission. The accreditation program establishes a process for law enforcement agencies to voluntarily demonstrate how they meet a professionally recognized criteria for excellence in management and service delivery. The Bloomfield Police Department was initially awarded accreditation in November of 2015, fulfilling an important strategic goal established by the police department three years earlier. The goal both then and now is that the Bloomfield Police Department be recognized as a professional, progressive police agency dedicated to serving the entire community of Bloomfield. The difference between then and now is I could read size 12 font, not size 18. So it's with great pride that I inform you that on Saturday, November 16th, the Bloomfield Police Department was officially awarded the statute, the status of advanced re-accreditation at the National Convention in Covington, Kentucky. As such, the Bloomfield Police Department has the honor of being recognized as achieving a level of excellence that only 5% of police departments on our nation have been recognized as achieving. It's an outstanding achievement and one that recognizes the dedication and the service of the men and women of the Bloomfield Police Department. I would like to thank them, and I would also like to thank all of you for your continued support over the years. For all of their hard work and efforts. So thank you very much.
Congratulations, Chief. Excellent. To you and to the entire police department. I do say that we do have the best.
Thank you very much.
So thank you very much for your diligence.
I have very good people who work for me. They make me look very easy.
Ma'am Chair, I made this comment in the subcommittee, and I think I sort of repeated here, that I have never seen a more successful police department than we've had during your term.
Thank you.
And I know you give credit, some of it to CALEA. I know that's a gift to say, but you've done a really good job.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
You too. So in the same vein as recognizing the great work here in Bloomfield, the town of Bloomfield received its bronze award for the Sustainable CT Program at the December 3rd Annual Convention of the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. So that's also a great thing for our town. The Bloomfield Sustainable CT Committee was very instrumental in us receiving this award. So I would like to, for us as a council, just to give a warm hand to the Sustainable Connecticut, Bloomfield Sustainable Connecticut Committee, as well as Jose and all the members that have helped us to receive this wonderful award. Once again, I do say that we are the best town in the state of Connecticut, and that just proves it. At this time, we do have a few announcements. Winter Break Camp at Leisure Services will take place on December 23rd to the 31st. There is no class on the 25th. It's $75 for residents, $150 for non-residents. It will take place at the Human Services Building from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. daily. There's also Family Bingo that will be taking place on Friday, January 10th. The fee is $5 per person. It will be 7:00 p.m., and there will be prizes and prizes and prizes. So that seems to be a great event for our families. The Bloomfield Library, their food pantry, so if you bring a non-perishable food item for all of those, maybe I'm speaking to myself, that might have some outstanding fees at the library. If you donate a non-perishable food item, they will clear your fees. If that's not the best thing going, please tell your friends and your neighbors, and if you have any enemies, we can clear up that debt with a couple cans of non-perishable food item. So we're, it's just one can. So we're doing a great thing for our food pantry, and we're also getting caught up on our fees. The Bloomfield Public Library is excited to announce that we are bringing the author Nathan Hale to our Bloomfield School and Proster Library on Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. We're already planning for 2020, so please go ahead and make note of that. Wednesday at 6:00 p.m., 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten Reception. Please join Proster Library for 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten Special Family Celebration. Please come out and take part in that. Please be mindful that our social services do have families that they're providing for for this holiday. For some families, it's very hard. So if you can donate, I saw that Councilor DiLorenzo came in here like Santa Claus this evening, but if you can donate funds or gifts that will be beneficial to our social services department, what we're going to try to do is make sure that our announcements are on our website so that you can go there and find out what's going on in town, because there's a lot of things going on in town, and we want to make sure that all our residents are aware so that they can take part. At this time, if we have any citizen statements and petitions.
Joan Gieder? Hi. Can you hear?
Yes.
My name is Joan Gieder. I live at 14 Sheba Way, and I'm the Director of the Library Board. At the risk of boring you, I am here again to urge the council to put together the building committee for the new library. The fact that the money for such a committee has been set aside, the fact that the Riley property has been purchased, the fact that the architect had been selected and had already drawn plans in the past make the failure to appoint a committee puzzling. On the other hand, if the council has impediments to putting the committee together, whether they're technical or otherwise, please share them so that we can work together to overcome them. Recent initiatives to decrease barriers to the library access and upgrade the collection reflect well on the town council as well as the library. The library has a lot of friends. Tell us what you need from us to help you get started. What I'm passing out now is a list of recent state grants for library construction. You'll notice that the town of Merritton received a million dollars. For Bloomfield to make our own requests, we need a committee and a plan. Thanks.
Thank you.
Is this okay? Can you hear me if I speak like this?
So I have reached out since some people already regarding to that, so I'm just waiting for some answers back. Yes. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am.
Well, my name is Ruth Ann Marchetti. I live at 669 Bloomfield Avenue, and I want to address Madam Mayor, council members, Mr. Smith, hello, and Ms. Howe. Thank you for your attention, because you're going to hear something that sounds an awful lot like what Joan Gieder said, and I apologize, but I feel the need to be heard. Many Bloomfield citizens and elected officials have long established that Bloomfield needs a new library. A process progressed to the point, and the firm of Taissu Kim drew up plans that made, that might serve well to re-initiate this process. Moreover, the town has already acquired the Riley Lumber property. The acquisition could be incorporated into a master plan that enhances accessibility and safety. Those of us who know the library, and I think most of us here do, really believe that the staff should be commended for doing such a fine job serving Bloomfield citizens of so many different ages. The heart is there, but the building is not. It's just not, and the space most assuredly is not there, in particular, the teens. And we really need to pay attention to these kids. The very kids who are coming to the library are the kids we should be embracing. And you know, it's tough. Patrons say, "Will you keep them down?" And teens say, "They're telling us to shut up." It's just not fair. You know, you go around to other libraries, and you see the teens have spaces. They're very involved in planning their spaces. It's a place they belong. And if you read the Pew Research, which is now old, several years old, they say the library should be the living room of the town. And it should be. It's a non-sectarian place for our community, and if we don't embrace those kids, we're screwing it up. We really are. So that's just my two cents. Anyway, with the, those of us who love it, you know, we really, we care about it. It's working. It's really working. The people there make it happen. But with the completion of a beautiful new human services center, I hope that we turn our attention back to a new and improved library. I know that money's been already allocated for a building committee, but I also know the competing pressing needs could move this priority down the list. We should evaluate all civic needs accordingly, but in my opinion, the library should be at the top of it. I, however, am not a council member. I am a citizen, and if we move expeditiously, we might be able to win money from a state grant for library building, which would defray some of those costs. Those forms must be completed, as Joan said, by June 30th, the end of the fiscal year. And though I'm confident, I really am confident that this current council will follow through on its campaign promise to help Bloomfield build this 21st century library, I feel compelled to go on the record to urge you to establish a building committee for a new library as soon as possible in order to bring a referendum on funding time for the, on November 28, 2020 election. I think that means my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to announce our subcommittee chairs.
Is it possible if one more comment?
Are you on the thingamajiggy?
I didn't, I forgot to sign up. Is it possible to say something? Or if I'm listening, yeah.
Um.
Yeah, usually they ask if there are any more. Do you want me to go inside?
So, um.
This is complicated.
I know, but see, once you open the door, you have to be careful of opening the door. So I will go ahead and give you, I'll go ahead and give you two minutes. I know that, but, so I'll go ahead and give you two minutes. I cut you down a minute, so you can go ahead.
You can do it. Thank you.
Not a problem. Jane Nudell Klein, 82 Terriffill Road, Bloomfield, longtime resident and college professor. So I just want to speak to endorse the comments of the previous two speakers about the importance of a library, not just as the living room of the town, but as the community heart of a town. We need to be thinking forward to the new residents that we're bringing into town, not just the people who are already here, who already used to be using the library, but the members of heirloom flats, other new buildings that are coming in. If we want to create a sense of community, a common public space where people can engage in common interests and activities and educate themselves and learn about each other is absolutely vital to the town. So I want to endorse and heartily recommend that a building committee be established quickly, expeditiously, efficiently. Let's get it done. Thank you.
All right. See, I opened the door, right? And once you open the door, that's the problem. So sir, because I've opened the door, you also will have two minutes. Please get up there, state your name, and take a quick two minutes.
Sure.
And this will be our last one. If your name is not on that list, this will be, this will be it. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Matt Cohen of 24 Wind Cliff Park. I will make my two minutes so quick, I'll make it a minute. I'm just here to also, you know, endorse the establishment of a building committee, particularly as it will benefit the plans for the new library. The library is obviously a valuable resource to the community. Speaking personally, it's where I not only learned to read, but where I learned to love reading. I grew up sitting on the floor of the library, and as you can see, I'm not young, but the building hasn't changed much since then. So it's, you know, it's, there's plans in place, it's time to get them rolling, and the committee is what's necessary to get that going. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay. So at this time, I will make public the appointments and the members of this council subcommittee's Admin Education. The chair is Councilor Curtin. Members, Councilor DiLorenzo, Brown, and Mann. Public Safety, the chair is Councilor Goff. Members, Councilor Calhoun, Mann, Merritt, and Wong. Finance, chair is Councilor Curtin. Members, Councilor DiLorenzo, Goff, Politis, and Brown. Goff, Councilor, DiLorenzo is the chair. Members, Councilor Curtin and Goff. Community Service, chair is Councilor Wong. Members, Councilor Brown, Calhoun, and Politis. Land Use and Economic Development, Councilor Mann. Members, Councilor DiLorenzo, Wong, and Curtin. Committee on Committees, chair is Councilor Calhoun. Members, Councilor Brown and Politis. I know that some of the subcommittees have not yet had their meetings, but we will go down the line. So Community Service, Councilor Wong.
As far as Community Service?
Yeah, just, you haven't, when is your next meeting?
So my next, my first meeting is February 11, 2020. I don't have anything to report because we haven't had our first meeting, and I look forward to that first meeting in February. Thank you.
Excellent. Administration, Education, and Finance, Councilor Curtin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this point, I have nothing for Finance. The next Finance Committee meeting is on Monday, the 16th. But I do have a report, it's very brief, for Admin Education. We met on December 4th, and we basically discussed the naming of town facility that has been on the agenda for the last few months. We're currently looking at the current policy that's in place to make some amendments to that policy. So I think in the month of January or February, we'll finally have a document that we can send towards the council for an adoption. The council did take up the discussion around town attorney appointment. The committee's still discussing this. The Democratic Caucus is also discussing. I just want to put some clarity in regards to the attorney appointment. I think a year or so ago, this body decided to go through an RFP process. We did. It was a very lengthy process, cost the town a lot of money. We decided to go back to the process of appointing the town attorney, which was a political decision. We will continue with that process, but we're currently looking at the current town attorney and other attorneys that would like to apply for that position. It's not going to be an RFP process. We're going to go through a process through the committee and through the Democratic Caucus. The committee also took up the town treasurer, and on the agenda tonight, we have the appointment of Mr. Shawn Samuels, and that's to be, to be voted on tonight. The last time, the last item on the agenda is the meeting with the Board of Education. I know the mayor is planning to have a discussion with the chair of the Board of Education. Once that happens, then we can come up with an actual date for the committee to meet with the Board of Ed. We're trying to avoid any uncertainty like we did a couple years ago, to have an understanding of what's going on, the needs of the schools, and if there is a need, this, this body will act on, providing those needs for our students. So until further notice, when, once the mayor gets back to me with whatever she came out of that meeting, we will move forward. And that's all I have for tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Councilor Goff.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Public Safety just met, an hour, an hour and 20 minutes ago. So as Councilor Merritt referenced, we are very proud of the police department, and they gave us some great statistics. Crime for the year is down 18% year-to-date, and the categories of violent crime are very, very low. One of the things that came out of that meeting was this is something that we really think need to make other towns aware of, you know, other, we need to make aware of so that people realize the, what's going on with respect to public safety in Bloomfield. So I think that's, you know, along with the accreditation, we heard about it earlier, that's a very good thing. Where there was a lot of talk about parking violations, one of the main problems we've been having since we have acquired several truck distribution outlets is a lot of off-site parking, and there have been a lot of violations and enforcement actions by the police out on Phoenix Crossing. That seems to be clearing up, but as they mentioned, it's sort of a whack-a-mole situation. Once you do it in one place, it sort of leads to other places. So we're going to be talking about that in more detail coming, in future months. The Bloomfield Volunteer Ambulance just acquired their new ambulance. That was at a cost of $290,000, which I think are all citizen contributions. So that's a, you know, congratulations to the citizens of Bloomfield, and it's great we have a new, a new ambulance for a volunteer ambulance group. One other thing from the police department is that, and this was really excellent, a few weeks ago, there was an article in Harvard Current, "State Police Warn About Their Off-Duty Social Media," and that obviously entailed a question, what's our policy in the town of Bloomfield? The Bloomfield Police Department has had a policy for five years. Part of that was leading to the, as part of the CALEA accreditation, and their policy is, is working, has worked very well. So that's on the place where we're on the forefront. And just finishing up, we had reports from the two, the two fire districts, excuse me. Both fire districts, through November, there have been about 512 calls in the Center District. That is slightly behind last year, probably about 10%. We didn't get numbers. 484 calls in the Bloomfield Fire District, Blue Hills Fire District, excuse me, and that is about 10 to 12% below last year. So things are running well, public service, and it's nice to see, it's nice to go to a meeting like that and not have a litany of problems to deal with, so. Thank you very much.
Committee on Committees, Councilor Calhoun.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and thank you, community, for coming out during our meeting on December 4th. We discuss addressing, replacing the following two boards and committees. Library was one, Library Board, and we have, I have a recommendation going forward for that, and Zoning Board of Appeals for the ultimate position, and I have a recommendation going forward for that. And other than that, that's all we pretty much had until our next meeting. I am in the process of meeting and trying to replenish current committees that, that need so.
Thank you. Land Use and Economic Development? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Land Use and Economic Development Committee has not met yet. It will be meeting next, not, not tomorrow, but the following Tuesday at 7 o'clock. Thank you.
Goff, Councilor DiLorenzo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There was no Goff meeting. I think the next meeting is the fourth Monday of the month. Oh, India's saying now?
December 18.
December 18. Thank you, India. There will be a special meeting of the Dow committee on December the 18th.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Council on Business, 1920-26, consider and take action regarding appointment of the town treasurer. Is there a motion on the floor?
Madam Mayor, I move to appoint Mr. Shawn Samuels as the town treasurer for the town of Bloomfield.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussions?
Yes, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if we have enough, we can move this, but I do move to reconsider previous action regarding the treasurer stipend. I was, no, we can't do this within the motion, in discussion?
We can discuss it, but we, yeah.
Okay, so I would like the council, however the process would work, to revisit and reconsider a stipend per the treasurer. I know that, I don't know when or the timeline, but it was at some point taken away, so I would like us to reconsider putting that back in place going forward. Thank you, that's all.
Any other discussion?
I just want to follow Madam Mayor on that camp, that comment by Ms. Wong. I, I think that's something that can be discussed, and can be discussed in finance. I think it's something to think about. As you know, previously, the, we were, the stipend was roughly around $10,000 for this position, but I do believe that there is a commitment we need to work through deciding exactly what that stipend would be, but I would support that.
Okay. And then, Councilor Goff?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Unfortunately, I was not able to be at the rescheduled Admin Education meeting last week. I did look back at the treasurer's duties, et cetera. I guess I have one question to the, to the members of the Admin Education Committee, and that was, I have not heard any, any estimates on what the cost of this change would be.
Okay, so right now, we have not, so if, if you guys can just, we have not discussed cost or anything like that. That was not discussed in the subcommittee meeting. The only thing that was discussed was, or brought forward, was a suggested name for treasurer. There was no cost involved.
Madam Mayor, a point for clarification. The, what I'm asking is currently, the town treasurer is Mr. Byron Lester.
Correct.
And if we are going to switch over to Mr. Shawn Samuels as the town treasurer, I don't know what cost that would entail.
There's no cost.
So the name is not on check stock?
Madam Mayor, could I?
Oh, you mean the change?
All right. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just a point of clarification with Mr. Goff inquiry. I did speak with the Finance Director, and as soon as we make this appointment tonight, I can, I cannot tell you what that cost is associated with it, but I think it's a minimum cost. But she will be reaching out to whoever we appoint tonight in regards to trying to set up with the signatures and so on.
So can I just call the question?
No, I, I would prefer, I would have a comment on that. I, I, you know, I would, I would actually ask the, I would ask the group that we should not be making a change like this until we recognize what the cost to the town is. We have no idea. It may be minimal, but it could be quite a bit. I have no idea what check stock is out there. I have no ideas why things need to be changed, and that should have all been addressed with the Admin Education.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
That point that Mr. Goff is making is irrelevant. This is a council appointment, and regardless of whatever the cost is, Ms. Lester has been in that position for the past nine years, and is this body's prerogative to appoint someone in the position. So regardless of whether or not it's Mr. Goff, I mean, Mr. Lester or Mr. Samuels, the point that Mr. Goff is making is irrelevant at this point.
Okay, okay.
Madam Chair, I think we should refer this to the subcommittee.
Okay, okay.
This is not irrelevant.
So there's a motion on the floor. I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Madam Mayor.
Any abstentions?
I will abstain unfortunately.
Okay, so motion carries.
Who else?
Councilor Mann ex- abstained, Councilor Goff, and Councilor Merritt voted no. Motion passed. New Business, 1920-28, consider and take action regarding appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Is there a motion on the floor? Motion.
But second. I move to appoint Robert W. Ike to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate position.
Any discussions?
Need a second.
There was a second. There was, there was actually two seconds.
Great.
Thanks. DiLorenzo and Mann, but thank you. Is there any discussions?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councilor Goff.
I have one question. I have one question on this. Mr. Ike is also on the school board, so, and I didn't look this up, I'm just asking a point of information. Is it possible for someone to be on the school board and also at the same time be on the, what are we doing here, the?
Zoning Board.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
As an alternate?
As an, as an alternate, that is, that is okay.
They can be.
Okay. Madam Mayor, could I just address Council Goff's question? Since, you know, Mr. Ike is the chairman of the RTC. So when we met and Mr. Ike agreed to do this, it's really just in a temporary capacity until we find a permanent replacement. Unfortunately, the night of our meeting, we did not have enough people to come forward. We did not have a recommendation on a name to put forward. So Mr. Ike volunteered to do this only because, according to Marguerite Phillips, our town clerk, we only have sixty days in which to fill the position. So in order to meet that requirement, Mr. Ike volunteered to represent the ZBA as an alternate until we find a permanent replacement. So that was, that's the reason.
Councilor Goff?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Councilor DiLorenzo. And I have no problem supporting the nomination. I just was curious as to whether this was legal. That's, that's, that's my only question, whether he's doing it temporarily or, or you know, for a temporary, for a temporary time. I, I'm just asking a question. I know that when we as counselors got elected as council, we had to resign from other committees we were members of. So that, that was my only question.
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. 1920-29, consider and take action regarding appointment to the Library Board of Trustees. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion. And I move to appoint Dr. Maxine Ursery to the Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Stand.
We have two abstentions. Motion carries, Councilor Mann and Councilor Goff. 1920-30, consider and take action regarding adoption of council subcommittee meeting schedules for 2020. Is there a motion on the, do we have to do it each of them? Sorry. So can I have, if possible, motion for each subcommittee?
Madam Mayor, I move that the schedule for committees, oh, sorry. I move that the schedule for Admin Education Subcommittee and presented at the Town Council Meeting on December 9, 2009 be approved?
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
About Admin Education?
Yeah, question. Can I ask the chairman whether the date, Labor Day date was changed? Because I think you have September 7.
At this, at this point, Councilor Mann, I will work with India to change that internally. We'll make that change.
So that has passed. Can I have a motion for Committee on Committees?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the schedule for Committee on Committees Subcommittee as presented as a Town Council Meeting on December 9, 2019 be approved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Our Community Service?
I move that the schedule for the Community Services Subcommittee is presented at the Town Council Meeting on December 9, 2019 be approved.
Second?
Second.
Second. Uh, what is with that? Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Finance Subcommittee?
Madam Mayor, I move that the schedule for the Finance Subcommittee as presented at the Town Council Meeting on December 9, 2009 be approved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Goff?
Madam Mayor, I move that the schedule for the Goff Ad-Hoc Committee as presented at the Town Council Meeting on December 9, 2019 be approved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Land Use and Economic Development?
Madam Mayor, I move that the Schedule for Land Use and Economic Development Subcommittee as presented at the Town Council Meeting on December 9, 2019 be approved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Public Safety?
Madam Mayor, I move that the Schedule for the Public Safety Subcommittee as presented at the Town Council Meeting on December 9, 2019 be approved. Thank you.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any abstentions? Pass unanimously. Consider and take action concerning resolution of tax, pending tax appeals. We'll be discussing that in executive session. So at this point, we're going to have our report from our Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I was remiss in providing copy in time for Sharon to produce. I'll go through this, if you would pass these down. I'll go through this. And then I have additional copies for the public, if the public will.
One more.
Madam Mayor? I was looking at the package, I don't think we had the minutes from the last meeting?
Yeah, there, there was.
A minute.
They're not there.
Just briefly, and again, I'd be happy to provide this to the public, and we will post this on the town's website. These will begin to show up for citizens. We did hold a new council member orientation meetings and ran over several items of import to new members to the council. Once again, congratulations on the election. It's going to be interesting and fun, I think, working together. I have a meeting scheduled with Dr. Thompson on the 17th to begin working discussions with the school district. We have moved forward with council's subcommittee's desires with the Pennington Matrix Report. And today, we were successful in reaching tentative agreement with the Teamsters. That, that should be moving forward. We'll be moving on to additional labor relations work as we go. I'm missing a page here, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll make sure I get that to you guys. We are having some get-to-know-it difficulties with the new building at 330 Park. We continue to work on learning those systems and tuning them as we go. I have established a customer service staff committee with members from all of the departments being assigned. You can look to us to embark on creating some standards, some training channels and protocols, and the adoption of some best practices in the future. I am planning a departmental director retreat where I and the department heads will begin getting together to identify some initiatives and priorities for the next half of the year. Beyond immediate needs for the budget work, we'll also be discussing how we work to create better and more up-to-date channels of communication with the public, and how we might use some of the tools we already have at hand to a better effect. Progress on the Department of Public Works construction project remains a little challenged. Our schedule has continued to slip there. The men were supposed to move last week and did not into the new space. And I'm waiting to hear from the architect and the project manager on what they're going to be doing differently in Phase Two, so we don't have a repeat of slippage in Phase One. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, this past weekend, we had our holiday parade. It was extremely cold, but there was a lot of people out there. The youngsters enjoyed the parade, and they enjoyed pushing the button to light up the tree, so I think that was a huge success. We did have a couple ribbon cuttings. One was at the solar farm behind the Board of Ed, which was absolutely wonderful. It's going to be wonderful for our town. We had a couple counselors attending that. Counselor Deputy Mayor Mann and Councilor Goff was there. We also had a ribbon cutting at 10 Beach Street, the Habitat for Humanities property, and that was also wonderful for our town. And I think that's all that I have. So we don't have minutes from the last meeting, so we're just going to jump over that and do that next time. At this time, we're going to do our council comments. We're going to start with Council Politis.
Good evening. Just a quick comment. I think that, if I'm not mistaken, Bloomfield Center Fire District has their stuff a truck on Saturday at the, in Pancake Breakfast at the Fire Department. It's a good event. And hope to see people all there.
Count that out.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few things, but I'll be brief. Yesterday, the holiday parade last weekend was wonderful. It was nice seeing everyone out. Always a fun time, and always, always a thrill when the tree does light up, when it's expected to. But, very nice event. So I do want to say happy solstice to everyone. We are coming up, we are a little over a week, week and a half away from the celebration. As was mentioned earlier, Councilor Mann, Councilor Wong and I went, attended the CCM Conference last week. There were quite a few good presentations, but it was very nice at lunch after the governor spoke for us to accept the award for the Bond Certification for Sustainable CT. I know that's been in the works, and along with town staff, Jose Guino in particular, who's worked on that, and Ashley Stewart, our environmental planner. I would also give a shout-out to the Conservation, Energy and Environment Committee, who has shepherded that project along the way. I certainly am in support of the citizens who've come out tonight advocating for the library, anyone who goes to some of our surrounding towns where they have done renovations of the library, where they have space, and where they have really made it as, the common library is the living room of the town. You will see such activity at those places, and that's exactly, of course, the activity we need not only to increase at the library, but to increase in town center. So I certainly am completely in support of that, and I'm glad to see citizens coming out for that. Finally, I would like to make just a comment that, you know, we need to look at several appointments that the council does make. One of those coming up being Town Attorney, but we also need to decide how we do that. And I just want to make it clear that there are various opinions of how that should be done. Thank you.
Councilor Merritt?
Yes, to back up to the comments you made. One is, one of the things last year, we did, went through a great review of, for the Town Attorney, and found that our Town Manager thought he was the best Town Attorney he ever dealt with, and urged us to keep him, and, and we did. We also found out the choices weren't so great of the people. But the Town Attorney is so important, to make it just a political appointment for somebody, to give somebody a job is, is such a crime. It'd be really too bad if we don't look at somebody's credentials. We're happy to have somebody on board, but even those who have been adversarial relationships with him over the years have to admit he's just the best person for the job, and it would be a shame not to continue it. But, and the other point that was also made is that I went around back a couple years ago into other towns and looked at their libraries, and ours is less than half as big as any of the surrounding towns. Windsor and Simsbury, Avon, all have over twice as much space. And space is important because that's what's keeping programs of the 21st century-type library programs from Happy and Bloomfield. They just can't do it, we don't have the space. And so the real key is that we just need more space. We need to double the size of the library in order to carry the programs that these other towns do. We are, we are way behind these other towns. And because of that, and they can make a heroic effort in the library, but without space, they just can't offer the programs that other towns do. Thank you.
Councilor Calhoun?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone, again. I would encourage everyone to please continue to check on their neighbors. We are into the winter months. If you don't see your neighbors in some time, maybe within a day or so, please check, knock on their door, make sure they're, they're good in good standing. I would also, as I go into the chairmanship of the Committee on Committees, I would urge everyone to please go into the website. If there is a committee or commission that you would like to serve on, participate with, please go through the process. Please have your voices heard through your commissions and your committees. I encourage everyone to come out and participate, have a say on Town Council. Sign up, have your say. Again, thank you, and I look forward to continuing on the, on the council.
Councilor Curtin?
Madam Mayor, I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I have some brief comments on a few topics. I want to remind everyone, we live in a very pluralistic society, and we have to be mindful. There is different religions, socioeconomics, and we have to be able to respect each other viewpoints and whatever we believe. And that's very important, even under this body, per se. I want to touch on some of the things that were brought up in regards to the Town Attorney. I want to really clarify that, and it's kind of ironic because the Town Attorney just walked in. But the reality is, the Town Attorney appointment has been a political appointment for the last, I would say, twenty-something, thirty years, right? The council that came in, in 2017 decided to go through a process of an RFP. We did that. It cost the town a lot of money. It was a good effort, but it didn't work. It just didn't work. And I believe when we say a political appointment, it doesn't mean that we just go like this and close our eyes and just, oh, we're going to choose this one. We're still going to go through a process where we're going to vet resumes, per se, and to make a decision if it so happens that the current Town Attorney, we're going to select him, that will happen. But we will go through a process. I think it's the right thing to do, and we should be consistent from a standpoint of what this, this body has done over the years. In regards to the Town Treasurer, I believe that the point that was made tonight, it was, I was not clear about it, regardless of who we appoint, and once again, that's the, the council's decisions every two years, so everyone will understand. This body has the ability to make three appointments. The Town Attorney, the Town Treasurer, and, and the Town Clerk. And so far, India has been doing a wonderful job. So thank you, India. So, on a lighter note, I just want to wish everyone a, a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and I'm missing one.
Hanukkah.
Happy Hanukkah, okay? I want to cover all bases, per se. This is the last council meeting, so I wish you all well, and I will see you in the new year. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Councilor DiLorenzo?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I just want to also put my support for the library. I know we need a new library, we've talked about it for a long time. We need the Library Building Committee to be established. I think we just need to do an orderly, have this done in an orderly fashion, so that we're taking the right steps when we should take them, and especially something like the grant information that Joan provided for us. I think that's super important, I think we should apply for it. So whether it actually happens in time for referendum for this year, that's still to be seen. But I definitely think we should start it. We need a new library. I agree with Councilor Merritt. I've been to other libraries, and they are bigger than ours, which do allow, does allow for, you know, multiple activities to take place at the library. So I know how important that is. And I've been through our library with our former library director, and I understand the needs that she has brought up, and I'm sure the current library director feels the same way. So I think it's an important decision, and I don't think it's one that we should move into without a lot of thought, thoughtful planning. And I do agree, the main purpose for purchase, the town to purchase the Riley Lumber Company was to help support the growth of our existing Proster Library. So how that fits into the picture, it still needs to be discussed and planned for. So again, I think, while I do support it, I do think we need to, you know, not rush into it, make sure that we're planning properly, and not make some of the mistakes that we might have made when we went into the previous referendum. So, and I definitely support, again, filing for any grants that we can get, and doing that timely enough that they're not delayed. So with that, I also So, with that, I also, you know, this is the last meeting before the holidays, so I, again, as the mayor had pointed out, I did come in with a bag of goodies, and I'll tell you, you know, we, my wife and I adopt a family every year. We've done so for the past, I don't know, India probably knows how long.
Four years.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, it's a very rewarding feeling, and it's just such a nice thing to do. So, please, if you have the ability to do it, I would reach out to our social services and see if there's still, I don't know, the deadline is coming up, but there's always something you could do, even if you just give money to purchase the gifts, somebody I'm sure would be able to do that. So, it's just such a nice thing to do, and especially to know that you're helping a family that's in need. So, I would encourage you to do that. And if nothing else, definitely donate to the food bank as well. Okay, so with that, I'd like to also just wish everybody happy holidays, no matter how you celebrate them. I hope everyone enjoys the time with your family and friends, and hopefully we have decent weather and can celebrate. All right, well, thank you, and we'll see you in 2020.
Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also concur with my colleagues up here in regards to supporting the library and the 21st Century Initiative for that. So, thank you, ladies, for your diligence in coming out and continuing to push that. I appreciate that. Further, I attended Galvanize Connecticut this past Saturday, December 7, and it was hosted by the United States of Women, which is a nonprofit organization that empowers and equips women and feminists with the tools needed to fight gender equity. For example, a woman makes 79 cents for every dollar men make. Unfortunately, the gender gap widens when you dig into ethnic groups, and such as a black woman making 63 cents for every dollar a white man may make, for the same qualifications and for the same job. The main speaker here was Valerie Jarrett, and Valerie Jarrett is the co-chair of the United States of Women, and also former senior advisor to President Obama, so she was very enjoyable. And she said, "Change happens on the ground." So, change happened here, locally. So, I encourage and urge Bloomfield residents, Bloomfield businesses, and all through Connecticut, and the decision-makers to really ask themselves what's missing, who's missing, and address that in their policies and procedures to support gender equity. I will end my comments with a quote, "Do the best you can until you know better. Then, when you know better, do better." Maya Angelou. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Yes. Sorry, Counselor Merritt. I got caught up for a minute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's quite difficult to follow.
Yes.
But, I'll try. I just wanted to call attention to one of the items that you mentioned, Madam Mayor, the cutting of the ribbon for the new solar energy field at the, at the Bloomfield Board of Education. There's a lot more to it. We're talking about two megawatts of power in this community solar project, of which 60% will be going to offset the cost of school electric costs, and the rest of it will be available to homeowners, residents in our community who don't have access to solar, so they can buy a discounted electric cost from this program. And the significance of it is, it's expected to offset 1,762 metric tons of CO2. I mean, you can't even fathom what that is, the size of it, but also it could be considered 198,243 gallons of gasoline by, saved by this. So, here in our own town, we have the state's first community shared solar project, something we should be proud of, something that our Conservation, Energy and Environment Committee should be proud of, because they've been working in this area of solar and energy conservation for many years, and brought the help to bring this about. So, it's through the acts of fellow citizens, trying to improve our community and having a longer view and taking action. I think this is very exciting, and it's already online, so, and I think all of, I think they told me all of the residential subscriptions have been filled out by now. So, that's moving forward. One other item that wasn't on the, on the other list was ABC.
Alliance for.
Alliance for Bloomfield Children, that was, is having an event this Saturday from 1 to 4 at Republic, and asks people to bring a toy, an unwrapped toy, for our own community. People helping people, that's what we want to do. And I think that's all I have to say, except Happy New Year to all our fellow residents and for the folks out in TV land. Thank you for coming, too.
So, one of the things that I wanted to talk about briefly is snow removal. And we had our first winter event last week, and I got a phone call from someone who wasn't happy that after they cleaned their driveway, that Public Works went by, cleaning the street kind of like backed up their driveway. So, I reached out to the town manager, and then I went outside and exercised by cleaning the driveway. Won't do that again. But, people, please let's be mindful, that snow, that was like the soft opening for winter. There's going to be more coming. So, please, let's try to be mindful of that. Robert has a formula about how you can clean your snow, so that it doesn't get backed up by the DPW when they come through. You want to talk about that?
Sure.
The snow plow is going to carry X amount of snow in front of it the entire time it's moving down the street, and when it hits the empty opening of your driveway, it's going to dump whatever is in that plow in the end of your driveway. And we have literally hundreds of driveways that get impacted that way every time it snows and we plow. Unfortunately, we don't have enough men or plows to go back and clean that out. It is possible for you to prepare for that if on either side of your driveway, you shovel out a strip of snow that's about three or four feet back and about eight to 10 feet long. When the plow comes by, it will dump the snow in there, instead of dumping it at the end of your driveway. So, a little more shoveling might result in a cleaner driveway at the end. I'm sorry, we can't do better than that.
My technique is you don't have to clean out on the side they're coming from, so because that's where the line is dumped. Afterwards, it doesn't matter. So, that's just one side.
So, here's the thing. Good luck with the winter. We live in southern New England. Let's all try to do the best that we can. This past weekend, I don't know about anyone else, but I am a Channel 3 news watcher, and I really felt like a member of the family passed away this weekend, with Denise De Senzo passing away suddenly on Saturday. And since Saturday, her Channel 3 family have been honoring her for the women that we see on TV, the women that they experience in the newsroom, and the women that they experience outside of the newsroom. And the amazing thing is, she was the same, whether it was on TV, whether it was in the newsroom, whether it was when she went out to do a story, or whether she was with her family. And it really gave me time to think. Sometimes, we don't understand the effect that we can have on people. However, if we realize that it's not always about us, but it's always about kindness, compassion, respect, and empathy, I believe we have more than impact on the people that we come in contact with and the people that we serve. I don't think that I can ever watch Channel 3 News again without thinking of Denise De Senzo. Her grace, her compassion, her example should be an example to all of us, not just up here, but when we're out there, when we're interacting with our residents, and when we're interacting with each other. One of the things that they say, that she always said to them, is "Be you." So, I'm going to leave that for 2019, going into 2020. Be the best you possible, because we will all leave this planet at some point in time, but we can impact it and impact the people that we come in contact with. Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Solstice, whatever it is that you celebrate. Be the best you possible, especially for the New Year. At this time, we're going to go into executive session, discussing pending claims and litigations concerning settlements of pending tax appeals with the town manager, our town attorney, and the assistant to the town manager. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, so moved.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Happy holidays.